First of all, which will lead us in prayer.
I will. Mr. Pro, to Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Again, we thank you for the privilege of coming here and serving the people of our community as council people and also as mayor at the positions. Father, tonight our hearts are heavy for our brother Terry Robertson, the loss of his family. We pray for comfort in that situation. We also pray for comfort for Brother Barry Coffey who is with us tonight on telephone and with a COVID positive test. We pray that all is said and done tonight would be in your will and to your glory. Jesus, amen.
Will you go ahead please?
Amen. As light creatures, unified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I have got Councilman Barry Coffey on the phone here. I'm gonna put him on speakerphone. He's not able to be here tonight if he didn't make any calls. He's cases that would be fine. Barry, you need to identify yourself.
This is Councilman Barry Coffey.
All right, Barry, I'm gonna lay the phone up on the table here. You can participate.
Thanks.
Okay, first of all, I guess we need to hopefully everyone's had a few minutes to look at last month's meetings, the minutes, and anyone has any questions on those? If not, I need to get a motion to approve those minutes.
The special call meeting.
Okay.
That's what I did.
The special call and the regular meeting. Just get a motion to approve?
Motion made.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
We probably haven't. First name, Carl Rose, since Barry's on.
Since he's on.
Oh, that's Carl Rose.
Okay.
Mr. Margul.
Yeah.
Tony, right?
Yes.
Mary Gobby?
Yes.
Wilmer?
Yes.
Okay, we have a special guest with us tonight. Mr. Jeff Recker is here and he's actually the owner of the new store up in Jamestown, Hens and Ayers.
Hens and Air, correct.
And he called and we had a discussion for a little while. He wants to talk to us about maybe getting together, working on getting an event for Jamestown. So if you want to come up and...
Well, thanks, Mayor. I've put together a very brief outline of a proposal and we have received...
If you'll give me two coffees, I'll broach one off of Barry tonight.
Sure. We have received a lot of early interest and support. I can give you one of that and I can give you one. I can email anyone. But I'll begin by saying this started out, I'll try to be very brief. It started out as a discussion between Mark Blasco and I, who owns and manages the Cumberland Guitars, and we're talking about the Lake Fest and there was a musician there speaking to how hot it can be and difficulty in performing in such heat. We said, well, we need something in the spring. And Mark said, you know, I've got a name that I've been playing with for the last couple years. I'd love to do something. And I said, what is it? He said, Lake Rattle and Roll. And immediately I had a vision of the square and what it could be. My wife, just small correction, Mayor, the store is really my wife's.
Oh.
I work for her. It was her idea and she's got this store and we opened formally on the Christmas on the Square and just saw that as a tremendous blessing. And so in thinking of trying to recreate something like that in the spring, my vision, when Mark said Lake Rattle and Roll, I envisioned having a go-kart race around the square. Had set up some hay bales and doing some sort of go-kart race. We started talking. We said, yeah, we could get vendors and food vendors and different things. And the discussion went on. The following day, a fellow came in to buy a ring and I started talking about it. And I said, you know, I don't know, maybe we have a car show. And he said, well, I sponsor the summer nights. I said, would you be interested in being our first sponsor? Maybe we'll do a car show. He said, absolutely. So that was kind of the first, hey, this is interesting. And then somebody else came in and we started talking. And then the idea evolved and replacing the car show with the boat show just came like two nights ago as my wife and I were discussing. And she said, well, the name is Lake Rattle and Roll. Why don't you do something with boats? Said, honey, that's why I married you, because you're smart. That's the obvious thing. And so we thought about, we thought, what could be fun that would attract families? But well, a pontoon parade. And folks could dress up the pontoons as floats. We've been to other events where there's a theme and so like this case, you know, Lake Rattle and Roll is a parody of Shake Rattle and Roll. And maybe there's a 50s theme or something like that. Mark and I were talking and we said, you know, well, we need to think of a grand marshal. And Mark said, wow, you know, you'd be great. Lance Burton. I didn't know who Lance Burton was, but I looked him up, did some research, reached out through Facebook and through his website. Yesterday, I had three phone calls, or two or three phone calls with Keith, who tours with him. He's kind of his partner in crime magician. And then I also got the email from his personal assistant. And Keith, my last phone call, said Lance is so excited, he's so honored to be considered for this if you should move forward. And we're available, we'll block the date off now. Lance said, if we could just cover expenses, that would be great. We talked about, you know, possibly doing the bigger show with him and friends versus just what was at the last chamber meeting. But we've got great, strong support. Mayor didn't like the idea. I ran it by early. I ran it by Jeanette from the tourism board. She loved the idea. Every business that I've spoken to has loved the idea. I spoke with Laura and Mike, sales for Mini Indy. They loved the idea. We talked about how we would do the go-kart racing if we were to go down that avenue. It might only be four or five go-karts and it might be, you know, certain people that are well-known in the city, driving them, sponsored by different businesses, really an entertainment event. And, you know, we can pull in some sort of benefit, community group or some project, something like that to help foster community and growth in Jamestown City Square. That's our goal, is how can we get just as many people in the square that were there the night of Christmas on the Square? And how can we do it frequently? Well, we can do it by having a big event that kind of kicks off the Lake Cumberland season. This would be a week after Mother's Day and Derby Day, which that's kind of, you know, Derby Day, a lot of people start coming here, but here's a reason for them to come right back or to make that their kickoff weekend if they normally wait till Memorial Day weekend. So there's a lot more on there. I just kind of ran through it briefly. So the date is Saturday, May 14th. It's also on the eve of a full moon. I spoke to Pastor Bucky at Jamestown Christian. He, well, there's a reason that's good is because we've talked about, you know, we'd like to have something every month if possible.
Sure.
And a month later, well, when I started going to full moon picking parties in Nashville, there were maybe 500 people there. You try to go to a full moon picking party in Nashville now, you're gonna find about 15,000 to 20,000.
Yeah.
It's an event that the community loves. And so it'd further bring it back. You know, I put something like on a bounce house. That's always great for kids. We talked about the mini Grand Prix, long mile races. I've never been to one, but I ride one every weekend around my yard. You know, I think we've got enough mower companies in town. Highway 80, when I mentioned that to them, they said, yeah, we would consider sponsoring that in some way. Live music. Mark's got a lot of connections in the music industry and I do as well, living in Nashville and working in the entertainment business from time to time. We've got some interest tonight. Mark said Cumberland Thunders already saved the date. They're available. Spoke to Lance's partner there and he said, we said, well, maybe we have an Elvis impersonator because of the Lake Rattle and Roll. He said, well, we know that. You know, being in Vegas, if you're not familiar with Lance, you know, in Vegas for 31 years, made close to, in excess of $100 million, one probably the most famous or most broadly seen magician there. You know, we could bring a couple of different bands. We have the ideas of, we've got the one stage set up where the movie and the stages, but we've got a perfect space where we put the Santa's mailbox right there. It's covered in gravel and bushes. Mark's already got the line on the stage reserved to put a stage over that. So we'd have a stage where there's a stage now and then a stage between Cumberland and our store. So you could do alternating type shows. The magic show would need to be, for many reasons, it'd be good to be in the Christian Center. They're not allowed to charge for tickets there, so we'd have to make it free and open to the public, which is great, but you would have to reserve your ticket early. I think one of the key factors is promoting this regionally, not just here, but getting some outreach to Lexington, to Louisville and to Nashville as well. We, you know, are in the early stages to put together a budget and doing all that sort of thing. First thing we'd like to do is to gain the support of Jamestown City Council, Mayor's office, and confirm that this date would be doable for y'all. We do that, we can move forward with the budget, sponsors and so on and so forth. We'd love to have the City of Jamestown step up with some sponsor dollars and these would be going strictly to cover the expenses. As I talk, I've already reserved the domain, Lake Rattle and Roll. There's a number of ways we could put it together, but our goal is to bring entertainment and commerce to the city. The city wants to own it, we'll give it the name for however, you know, whatever. That's our goal.
I was sold Lake Rattle and Roll.
What was that?
I was sold Lake Rattle and Roll.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Any questions?
Any idea what kind of expense was going to be involved as far as Lance Burton, you know, covering his expenses?
I don't know what he charged for the chamber, annual chamber meeting, and I'll get that from Marissa or, you know, or whoever can provide that information. In my first discussion with Keith, of course, he's a performer and he's the entertainment man to try to negotiate, you know, well, that was a limited show. The full show is normally $30,000. Well, then when I spoke to him the second time, it was Lance wants to do this, he's honored. He said, well, make it work if we can just cover expenses. Now, there are expenses, you know, we're still far enough ahead that them routing their trips and things like that. Keith is in Iowa, but he comes here almost every weekend. He was gonna try to be here before the end of the month again, if that makes sense. But I said, you know, I'd like you to come to present to City Council to talk about this, but the next meeting won't be until, you know, the third Thursday in February and we'd like to really get this going early. Lance has also been in a movie called Billy Poppet and that was a key part of Keith saying, hey, if we could do this and we could show that movie, that would be big. And so I mentioned how we had shown the movie that was produced by my donor for my primary job. It's nonprofit. One of my donors produced the movie, Game Changer. The other thing that plays into this is that producer, I spoke to just yesterday about how this thing has all come together. Because after his visit here and after staying here for a total of, oh, I think about eight or nine days on two different occasions, he now has eight pages written on his next script for a movie he wants to shoot right here. We've already picked out several locations. One, the Diamond Stables, two, the barn out near Goose Creek. He wants to shoot on Town Square. And one of the ways that he can keep his costs down for low budget or smaller budget, family, faith-based film, is by taking advantage of, you know, big crowds that are supportive and maybe he can even write Lance into another movie or something, you know. It's all about partnership and just bringing people together. And I think we can, we can do that in a big way. A little bit of my background, before I moved to Nashville, back in the 90s, from '95 through '99, I was a location manager in Hollywood. Was the first assistant location manager on the movie Austin Powers, if you're familiar with that, and a slew of many others. Been around entertainment and managing productions and things like that for many years. I'm also a former web owner, web company owner. So, you know, I'm not stepping into this with just, hey, here's an idea. I know what it takes to stage a big event, you know, movies that, you know, you're spending millions of dollars a day to small, you know, music festivals that still go down to Nashville. Last time I was down to Nashville was I worked for the Charlie Daniels folks for the tribute he had there. And I'll probably be reaching out to them as well and work with Alabama and others. So I think we can, we can really bring the city some magic. And if we pull this off, the, I was just telling Wayne, I said, you know, the one real little slice of magic that I'd love to see happen here is maybe we could get Lance to make that clock start working again. That's my presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any kind of thoughts or questions or? I guess the first thing I think about, and I talked to Jeff about that when we met, was I know when we have an event like this, it all has to be approved for the city to be shut down, for the square to be shut down. So that's something, I guess, that would be something we would have to...
Yeah, that's a little quick on that.
Is it?
Yeah, they want it, I mean, they want, like, my Lake Fest date is like a year in advance. That's something I have, you gotta turn it into Conley on Somerset. You gotta have, you gotta be bonded and show their insurance counters and all that.
So maybe that would be a first thought is that we can check at some time or we can get with them and see what we would have to do, what's involved. Is it possible by that day that we can? I think that'd be the first thing we'd have to do.
Sure.
Because you'd have to have the, it would have to be shut down for this stuff to happen.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes.
He's done an amazing job. That's pretty impressive.
It is, absolutely.
Probably would have to go through HK, but what about liability with cities for those races go, things like that?
That was gonna be my second question was, is that something that we would have to check on in advance? What kind of liability, you know, or who would be against the liability?
Well, I think there's always liability involved. We're probably gonna check with the JCs and people that put on events like that and see how they perceive as far as having participants in order to keep them from being. And maybe we'd have to have insurance. I'm not sure, but it's something we'd have to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I discussed with Laura and Mike about the liability for the go-kart thing and there's some issues with timing that I can speak to offline, that they want to sponsor it, they would love to participate, they're not sure if they're gonna be here in town, but that's, I don't see as the go-kart thing, you know, if that's not possible, that's okay. We can still do a long series.
Sure.
We can still do some of these other things.
Sure.
And whether if it's, if I need to set up a separate LLC to be able to get the liability insurance and cover that based upon sponsors, I'm happy to do that. Whatever we need to do to work together, I'm sure.
Great, great.
And I guess you...
I'm all, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, would this be, would the city need the sponsor of this or would it be, you said the LLC, would it be a private sponsor using the city as a partner or how would you perceive?
Whatever is deemed best, I said, whatever's deemed best in the city's interest.
I got you.
We simply have a store on the city square and we live just outside the city, but we wanna see the event for the city.
I got you.
This isn't something that I wanna necessarily do here and then do something. If it evolves into something that is much bigger, who's to say? But this is where I want to make it happen, so.
Got you. I'm all for it. And so if we can work, get all the details worked out, the big thing is probably gonna be the closing the square down. I don't know if that's a hurdle that can be overcome or not.
Sure.
I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Are you anticipating figuring, I'm trying to speak?
Yes.
Well, I mean, are you anticipating fixing the budget for this thing and giving us some idea of who?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, initially before Lance came into the, to the mix, we were thinking of a budget of about $10,000 might be very reasonable to get, if we get participation from partners, you know, if we get Stevens Pike and Steel to say, hey, we'll donate the fencing, we get somebody to donate the hay bales, we get the city to say, we can cover security. I think we can get enough partners together that our, our expenses are really just entertainment and promotion. And the promotion would be, we definitely need some billboards.
Right.
Billboards here, maybe a billboard in Somerset, maybe a billboard on 75 or 71 or, you know, or 65. That sort of, that would be, and we might be able to get them as partners in some of the Billboard Fairway. I mean, I'm buying a billboard right now for Hens and Air. Who's to say? And we're only talking about a month. The big part of that is the production cost. First time is 500 bucks. Well, if we do the designing of the billboard correctly, it's just a matter of changing the date into same skin every year, which we hope this to be multiple year.
What kind of stages are you looking at?
You have to talk to Mark. It's wooden, well, I presume wooden stages. You know, he's got the dimension.
He's got, he's got something in mind.
Not like what we would have on Lake Fest. No, no, he's got that in mind. I mean, Mark's background, you know, he toured with, well, Straight Hats, he toured with them. He knows entertainment.
Which is likely to be, some people might not know.
Mark Blasco owns Cumberland Guitars. He's a former sponsored skateboarder. I found that out. My son really liked that idea, but he's also a luthier for, I don't know, a luthier means a gentleman that is skilled and knows how to tune guitars and air stringed.
Hay guitar, actually.
Yeah, and he, he is a master and he's very smart, very knowledgeable. He's vice president of the Chamber, Ross County Chamber, and he's become a good friend in a very short period of time.
Anybody else have any?
Say hello to Mark and Kim Weston.
Barry, you have anything else to say or any questions?
I think that's pretty amazing, pretty, I mean, with all he's been up with and the vision. It sounds great, as long as we can get it done.
Well, I think we need to start by first finding out about the square because that's gonna be the answer to a lot of things. If that's not something we can pull off, then maybe we start thinking for the next year, but, you know, but I know you have put a lot of work in this and it'd be something we'd like to see happen, but we'll need to...
Well, and even if we were not able to pull off closing the square, I think there's still a way we could envision this to make it work. I really do. I'd love to see that, but I'm willing to work around whatever we need to do to get an event in May that helps to kick off Lake Cumberland tourism and business and commerce and entertainment to the square.
And I think that's a good idea, even if it's something that we can't get the square shut down, next year we know it that far in advance and if it's something that we see that we need to try to work toward getting that approved for the next year, it would be a start, just to start with part of it or whatever we can get done.
And as far as advertising goes, getting it out, I mean, we're in the middle, well, it's, of course, we can't firmly commit to it yet, but we're in the middle boat show season and Jeanette Keller-Marson, who is our local tourism director, she'll be visiting all these shows, Lexington, Louisville, Cincinnati. You're gonna be grateful to get something out.
But she was one of the first that I emailed with the concept and, I mean, it was, before the night was over or the next morning, she had responded from the road a week and a half or so ago, two weeks ago, whatever, saying a lot of it. And now that she's been elected the director of all the tourism boards, that really could be a big feather in our cap too.
Well, I appreciate you doing all the work you've done on it and we all, I think, want Jamestown to have as much going on as we can and anything we can do that helps improve the businesses and bringing more business and people in, I think everybody's all for that, so.
I love the idea of making an annual, being able to really do. I think it's a great idea. I fully support it. If we can, if we can make it happen, I fully support it.
Okay, so Tyler will check on the square. We'll find that out and then maybe we'll just get back with you and then we can get maybe together and work on what we are gonna try to get done if possible.
Okay. Well, Father, if I could follow up with you by the end of next week, is that...
I'll send them, I'll send them an email tomorrow and I'll drive it. I may have to get some stuff from the insurance. I know I'll have to. I gotta get them out, draw it up, but I use, I use the same thing as Lake Fest. I'll just, you know, the dates and then I'll send it doing, see what it says.
What we were thinking for the road closure maybe is, I've gotten approval from MyDi LLC, which is across from Dollar General, to use their parking lot. I talked to the folks next to them too for staging the pontoons. So my thought was we could stage, I'd like to stage right on 127. That way we could see and get excited about it if somebody's staging the night before. The other option is just to stage the city parking. You know, would you get that approved?
Yeah, that's, that'd be crazy.
We can probably pull that off.
And, you know, I've got contacts at Dollar General too. I mean, I'm looking at getting some big corporate sponsorship for this, you know? Dollar General, Dollar Market here, Jamestown. I mean, I'm in there twice a day some days. You know, I'm sure they would love to have something starting and ending, a finish line right there or some, you know, long straightaway, even if it's just a long straightaway, one lap or several laps around the square and back kind of thing. And we could even incorporate the car show where the old motel was.
Right.
I mean, there's...
Lots of options.
Yeah, there's so many possibilities. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Can I stick around for the rest of the...
Sure, absolutely. And I think the next thing that I have that we need to talk about is the discussion of the Playbrand equipment. And we bought new equipment from the city park. Tyler, you probably have talked to know more if you wanna...
Yeah, we, I think we may have overstepped ourselves. We thought we were gonna put this thing together. We drove... We drove two semi truckloads of, uh, equipment out of the back of the truck. So we, when we called this guy to see, so what would it cost for you to come back and put this together? Cause it's, I mean, it, it's gonna be a big project. I don't, we, I, I, I don't know that we ever get it up, but by, by the spring, I doubt it, seriously. They want about twenty-nine something, they're pushing thirty thousand dollars to put this, to put this up. Uh, we do have the ARPA money for that. Um, it can be used for that, if that's what we wanna do. Otherwise, it's just straight out of the general fund. But he will have it, he needs to know because he's, he wants it in February, right?
February, yeah.
He was gonna try to get it up, you know, before spring came in, because he's already booked from there through summer, if we're gonna do it. When we called him, actually Neil called him, and he said that about eighty percent of the people that say they're gonna do it called him back. The other twenty percent called him when they, when they messed it up trying to put it together. So it, it's pretty much a given. He got to know where we're gonna do this, but I guess that's on your own. If you wanna make a motion to try to amend the budget, uh, pay for somebody to come in and put this up.
I don't see what you've got to do.
A liability issue, I think this is the best, I, I, me personally, I think it's the best route, too. You know, if that falls on them.
Oh, a question, is this replacing current equipment? Where is the current equipment going?
Uh, well, that's, I, Barry actually asked me that exact same thing. That's something I wanna get with KLC and find out from a liability standpoint, what we can do with it. If we can get rid of it, or it just needs, something needs to be done with it. It is old. It's, it's actually pretty rough shape. The, the slide would probably make it through, but the rest of the equipment is pretty old and, and punished itself, really.
Cause if you sold that to someone, or someone to come take that down, you may be able to work a deal.
I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's coming though. They're not gonna want this. They're not gonna want this.
It, it's a lot, it's a pretty advanced.
And this new one is, I mean, it was a, it was the grant we worked on, got a fifty-fifty split on it. We wound up, help me, Neil, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars was the total.
Proportion, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we're half that. We actually bought a couple extra pieces to go with it. So we wound up with about seventy-four thousand dollars in the, in the actual playground equipment. That's what he said when he come, that they get, they, they put it together on the base price. And they get a percentage of the base price to, to put it together. So that's what the price is off of, the total, total cost.
Just fill the extra makeup handicap room.
Yeah, we'll put a swing set in to replace the one we had. There was three, three or four extra pieces that, that Nick had put in there when we, when we bid it up first time.
Anybody's thoughts or opinions, or you think that's something we wanna go ahead and, and have them to put it in? Do you wanna check it out? I mean, what's everybody's thoughts? I, I kinda worry about the liability of us putting it in. If something was to happen down the road, if we don't have it put together right, or if we have some issues with it, but that's-
And we, we contacted the contractor to have it put together through the head start, the, the, the head start, but they just didn't want to tackle it, so. We, we reached out, tried to find, uh, other sources.
Well, when you talk about when you're thinking playground equipment out, unless you realize what this is, it's, it's not like your normal playground equipment. Yeah, it's not what we have in terms of-
Yeah, well, I can imagine, I mean, us putting it together, it took me like two days to put one of that, that you bought from Walmart up. I can't imagine putting this thing up after I got the, when we started unloading, I was not expecting the pieces that came. I mean, there are shipping crates. The, the garage that we bought, uh, across from the park, it's full. I mean, it is, you can't get anything else. There, there are shipping crates full of, of pieces that go with this thing.
Well, I mean, we might get it put up, uh, one way or another.
It's gonna have to be set up. We're gonna have to saw some blacktop. The chain link's gonna come down. It's a lot bigger, it's a lot bigger area than, than what-
Than what we've got allocated.
Yeah, yeah. Did they come, did they come Mark, electric again? That one, there's only one drop coming across either. It's coming from that light bulb. I think that's the only thing we gotta look at. Uh, everything else, we think down the way, but it's gonna have to be, the blacktop's gonna have to be sawed, it's more squared off. It is gonna take a lot of the road coming back, you know, that was behind it. I think we left enough where we can have a walking path behind it to get all the way around it, but there won't be a travel road each side. You come to the top drive or the bottom drive, for one or the other.
But we will have some kind of fencing or something for security to keep it with the road being that close enough area. I just hate for us to go in and spend lots of hours and stuff trying to put it together and then have to turn around and call it again. Because we can't get it done, or that it's more advanced, but that's just my thought on it. You know, uh, we bought it, we need to get it put up. If they, I'm thinking, can start in February and get it up, it needs, it needs to be available for the summer.
He's talking, when he brought the crew in, that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be long putting it up.
No, I can resist in time, it's-
It's, it wouldn't long.
Well, 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 I'm sure it'd be a bit take us.
I'll make a motion immediately.
But Tom Holt, I heard Tom Holt has done a couple of playground equipment jobs out of state for people. I agree with you. I mean, this might be something he-
Tom, Tom Holt?
No. I, I'm pretty sure he's done a couple of projects out of town or out of state, putting playground equipment together and putting it up. I don't know, this may be far beyond what he would, I, I don't really know how big of a project he was involved in, but I know he's done a couple.
Yeah, I haven't spoke with him, but I spoke with, uh, the county in Somerset that, that's what they do.
You wanna try to, somebody get it, hold it, take it down?
I don't know, it's just a thought. I don't know if it's anything Tom is gonna tackle or not. I don't know how big of a playground set he's had, he's putting together. It may have been, you know, this may be much larger than anything he's ever tackled, I don't know.
I looked at the pictures of this, and it's, it's humongous. We need to get on with it. You know, swipe it, qualify to do it, can get it done. It's what I feel like, you know, we, we have, we don't have plug tap in place, and they're gonna, they're not attached, can't.
It is there, but it's a very big one.
So I guess if, uh, the question is that we need to decide on is if we want to, uh, to try to get them to go ahead and do this. Because if they can do it in February, that's pretty close. We're gonna have to let them know. And I guess if, if that's what we're gonna do, we, uh-
Well, I second William's motion. William made a motion to amend the budget. I'll second his motion.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Tony Rupp?
Yes.
Barry Gobby?
Yes.
William Murray?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm in the budget. Get in touch with them and see if they can get that scheduled.
You can, you can be over tomorrow, but we can get it up by soon.
All right, new playground equipment coming to Jamestown. Pretty exciting. So, uh, next thing I think we have on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance on the two thousand twenty-one dash oh-oh-six alcohol ordinance. And-
I'm just gonna read this, uh, title. The entire ordinance is on file in the city office. We need to. It's the ordinance that the city of Jamestown, Kentucky adopted with amendments found herein the following set of regulations and requirements for alcohol beverage control here and after the known as City of Jamestown Alcohol and Beverage Control Ordinance. Further adopting all alcohol and require KRS, including but not limited to KRS chapters two forty-one through two forty-four, as recently updated by the General Assembly and administrative agencies. So, uh, so, like I said, the entire ordinance is on file. You got anything you wanna add, each guy here?
Well, actually, what this does is just take, county is administering our alcohol, um, regulations now, and they receive, is it five percent, six percent?
Yes.
They get six, and they have been kicked back into us, just because they want to, two percent of that, which goes into our fund for, uh, the control of alcohol. This ordinance permits us to take over their responsibilities. Because we're a little late, we can only collect five percent of the regulatory fee, uh, which goes into our coffers, purposes of regulating alcohol, but it's all ours. Of course, we will have a, this gives us the city and alcohol administrator to see this, collect the funds, do the budgeting for that, and all of those things. Russell Springs does their, Russell, city of Russell Springs does their own. They're able to collect six percent. But that's because they were a little quicker in getting it started than we are. So this just transfers the responsibility from the county of Russell to the city of Jamestown.
And I've actually went and took some numbers and put together on this to see the difference in two percent and five percent. To me, it's a given that, um, the difference, just in, um, what we had that we were paid last year, we would be half that again. I think we received, it looks like about forty-nine thousand last year, and, uh-
That's what we would have.
At five percent, and we received twenty-seven, so it's, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars just on sales from prior year. We've got another bar that's in Jamestown now. We've got a Mexican restaurant that I know has called about getting licensed for alcohol sales.
Family Dollar called today or yesterday, too.
Jamestown get the licensing fee, too, wouldn't they?
You get, yeah, well, license fee, you get license fees, but they're like-
Every year?
Yeah, they, they pay a license fee every year, but it's, basically it's took out, they're credited, that license fee is credited through their reg fees. So if they get twelve hundred dollar license, then they've got twelve hundred dollar reg fees credited. And once they hit that, then you, you start receiving all the reg fees then.
But it seems to me that the numbers are only gonna go up. So to get five percent instead of two percent, I, I can't find any negatives that we wouldn't do that. But that's, that's my opinion on that.
I agree totally. It's, it's, uh, something that we definitely wanna do, but my concern is that the way it was explained to me, we're gonna raise two salaries to do it. Is that still planned?
I don't know of any salaries that's gonna be raised from this point. Nothing that I-
Well, we have that in the administrator.
We do, and we think, I think we talked about Tyler, we take that position on. And that's why, um, I would recommend that we do. I've talked to Jeremy Coffey, that does it for the city, and, uh, he just says that, you know, that's, that he took it over. And he says it's, uh, probably, uh, quite a few hours that he spends on it. So Tyler has agreed that he would take it on with his salary that he has now. And, um, I just, I think that's the best way. He's done a lot of it already set up, a lot of it planned.
Well, I'm all for it. If it's not gonna cost us, you know, raising two people's salary to do it, I'm all for it.
It's, we need to, uh, make the vote, I guess, on this?
I'll make the motion.
Second, call the paper, you wanna call the court?
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Tony Rupp?
Yes.
Barry Gobby?
Yes.
William Murray?
Yes.
Okay, so Paige, can you get everything that we need to roll in on this?
Well, actually, wow, that it's done already.
Yeah, I've got the regulatory fees already, already ready. I do need, I do need a, uh, I guess just go ahead and give me a motion. I'm gonna be the ABC officer. I need a motion in a second where I can send this up, cause I stopped everything then. I've got, I've gotta restart all this and send it back in because you, you would have to sign off on it now. It was signed, you know, they set up to be the administrator the first time we read it. Now you will have to sign off, me, on me being the administrator, and I'll have to get a account set up with the state ABC office. And then that way that I can be actually, I guess officially a ABC officer.
Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Tony Rupp?
Yes.
Barry Gobby? William Murray?
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, what we, I think, one thing about these things, or about how many different licenses are, forty or fifty different?
There's a huge number of licenses. So this is gonna be a influx type thing.
I mean, uh, temporary licenses could be granted for this event, that event, uh, you know. The city of Russell Springs collected, uh, sixteen million dollars in regulatory fees since we went west.
Been a lot.
Sixteen million dollars in alcohol sales, and I think got almost a million dollars in the last five years.
Yeah, I just heard the numbers. It was nine hundred and fifty thousand.
I didn't know, everybody drank that, apparently, but this summer, it really is gonna explode, and we need to be on board.
I think it's a good news.
Well, it's free money, yeah. And I think we, we should appreciate the county of Russell for helping us, you know, they were really generous back in the winter. We were behind them, paid all of this.
Absolutely, appreciate it. I mean, they gave us, uh, two percent, and then I think six percent on Sundays. So we were able to create some income that way. So we appreciate the county doing that for the city. Okay, does anybody have anything that they wanna talk about?
Do we need, do we need to discuss, uh, Hale Jackson, or will that just be a, a straight out hire?
He's already hired.
Okay, everything's good there.
Just in the mayor's comments, I guess, I just wanted to let everyone know that Tyler and I went to the fiscal court meeting last week. We've had a discussion been going on for a while, think about the county roads and, um, some of the ARPA money, the money for the water lines and stuff that the city's gonna receive. Uh, we do have a, a list, so many roads, I think, that's been turned in, that people are wanting to get their roads on a list to try to get something done. But we did have, uh, Seawald Ridge Road is what was discussed at the fiscal court meeting that had, uh, from what I understand, been approved sometime in the past for Seawald Ridge Road to be the water lines and stuff down there. Tyler can address more on that, cause he knows a lot more about the water lines than I do. The part I know is that, uh, fiscal court has agreed to give us fifteen thousand toward that to get that, that project done and completed that was already approved to be done. So I'll let Tyler tell you a little more about what can be done there.
When, there's about thirty-five hundred foot of three inch line to be laid on Seawald Ridge Road. I'm thinking there's about five customers, uh, down through there, uh, three of them currently without water. Two of them that do have water have ran a service line several hundred feet down that road. It was brought to me in the past. I, I guess it was a miscommunication between me and Nick and the county. I, I thought that's what we're using, they were paying for it. I, I had it done, I had it submitted to the engineers. And they had guarded up, got it stamped, submitted to Division Water. It has been approved, uh, to be done. When, when I went over there, which maybe we was talking the other night about, um, trying to get it done, I'm fine, but that's, you know, I don't make those decisions. It's probably gonna cost us material wise, another fourteen thousand dollars of material. We've got about twenty-five hundred already in, getting it, uh, engineered, submitted to Division Water, approved.
Where's Seawald Ridge Road at?
It's off the Black School Room. I don't know if you know where Thomas Road is, right, right where you guys, Thomas Road. I don't know if you know where Thomas Road is, right, right where you get, Thomas Road, actually, another...
That's in the curve there, it goes right, just road turn there, curve.
No, listen, way up into where you're coming, I guess, yeah, if you're coming from, like, French Valley, going up there, it's up the right, going down. But it's, it's a line, I mean, it, it, there's no water line, but it's gonna, it's gonna cost, I, I, only thing I told them I could do, I could bid it out, I can, I can go from there, it's gonna cost, there, there's fifteen thousand, I think Mickey said he'd talk to Royce McGowan, he talked like he could lay it for like four dollars a foot, I couldn't get it laid that cheap. If you go through engineer specs, it's about a forty-eight thousand dollar project. Those would be inflated, I guess, you know, for engineer costs, admin fees, and stuff like that, but this is still gonna be a thirty to forty thousand dollar project, any, any way to look at it. So, it's gonna cost us at least another fifteen, maybe, maybe more than that, maybe twenty, up to twenty-five. I can have it bid out, and we can go from there, but like I said, they, they promised a resolution of fifteen thousand at the fiscal court meeting.
And this would be coming from the funds that we've been...
Yeah, we can use the ARPA money on this.
Would be used for that.
How much of that were we getting?
We've got two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars is what we...
I understand.
Yeah, what we spent, well, and that's another thing, that we, we spent the, we spent the, for the playground stuff, but it falls under the timeframe that, two weeks ago on Thursday, they changed the ruling of, the final ruling from the Department of Treasury to the federal government was that a city could take up to ten million dollars in revenue. Whether they had it or not, it, that's just the way they ruled it out, you can take up to ten million, ten million dollars. There's only nine places across the state that it would even affect. The county, you know, that, there, they fall in the same, but we, we do, they didn't receive that much money anyway either. But you can use it as any government service after that. So we can go back, if that's what we, we wanna do, and we can go back, the thirty thousand, we just, you know, we're looking at for the, to put the playground equipment together, plus we can go back and basically reimburse, or just say we spent ARPA money on the playground equipment in general. And any water sewer lines, any projects like that are, are approved with the, the money, too. On top of not using it as the government service, but it was already, it was one of the, like, six items that was already approved anyway. So I mean, I, this is something, I mean, we don't have to, I guess you all give me permission to, to bid it?
To bid, yeah, see what, see what the exact cost is gonna be.
It's another, we made, if I can get the bids, I'll, I'll put it out, I'll try to spec it and get it put out as quick as I can, I don't know the law, I don't know where I can get back, uh, the special call meeting, but maybe by the, maybe by the February meeting, we can have something and, and get it going anyway, if that's what we decided we're gonna do.
And the county's gonna give us fifteen thousand, cover fifteen thousand?
Yeah. And, and he said half, they made, they made, they made cover half by the time it's over with, I don't, they, they, when they said it, they said half, but...
They voted on fifteen?
Yeah, they voted on fifteen, and, and Mickey's, it would be about thirty, you know, it's gonna be about thirty if we can get it laid for four dollars a foot, but the first I talked to was six or seven dollars a foot, so, and the other one was ten dollars a foot at minimum.
Is that counting the money we'd already spent on the, is that counting the thirty thousand, the twenty-five hundred that's already been spent for that?
That'll be in, like, that's, I was looking that on their side, we, if, if we could find a way to do it, I would like to have done, like, they'll, they'll pay the, the cost of laying the pipe, and us paying material on them, we would've been, we'd had about fourteen thousand in material, something like that, I've got the, but it's right at fourteen thousand, thirteen something, and then we have, we've already paid twenty-five hundred to the engineers to have it submitted and drawn up and accepted by Division Water.
So we wanna go ahead and move forward and try to get some bids, or some, get some figures together on that?
Thirteen, thirteen thousand, three thirty, seventy-five is my material list, and that's SDR twenty-one, three inch. That, you know, that's all the tappet sleeves and everything else to go up through there, we have to move two meters, and then three more taps, but that's a, that's while, while supplies last, I guess. If, if that, if the three-inch line goes off the, the line in there, you're not getting it for that price.
Okay, is the talk, the numbers you're talking about, probably forty thousand dollar project, is that including this material cost, too?
Yes, that's everything, yeah. Yeah, and that's just, that's just materials, then we got about twenty-five hundred on top of that, and then whatever it costs for it to get half, half, like, I, I ordered the materials, so I, I just need really, really, I need to know, it's gonna, even if he does it four dollars a foot, it's gonna scare it so close that I hate not to bid it, you know, one, one, just the competitive part of it, two, if it goes over thirty thousand dollars, the ogre's gonna kick on it, and it's gonna be at four dollars a foot, it's gonna put it close, it's supposed to, I don't, I don't wanna take a chance on it. And I don't know that we'll get anybody even more than that, that's about far the lowest I've talked to, like I said, I talked to one, six or seven, the other one was ten at minimum, depends on what it look like when they get up there in the late line.
Can we just go ahead and approve doing this tonight, I mean, or do we need to get bids and...
Well, we can do it either way, I, I've gotta get a bid before I can do anything. I can't, I'm gonna have to get a bid, because like I said, it's gonna be, we're, we're gonna be the host project, even though we're getting fifteen thousand from them, if I'm, if I'm gonna be basically the manager of the project, I'm, I wanna bid it, because it's gonna flirt with a thirty thousand dollar...
Will the county come up anymore with what they're offering?
I, I don't know, that, that may be something we can go back and...
Negotiate.
Yeah, talk to them about, they talked about splitting the road, but that's, you know, they wound up on fifteen thousand because, you know, like I said, Mickey wasn't getting it laid for that, it's gonna run right, if, if they can lay it four dollars a foot, it'd be a thirty thousand dollar project. And I think that's what, that's the only thing they had to go by, I was there, 'cause we don't have any numbers, good numbers for them. But I can bid it out, and, and try to get the, the bid specs, and then go from there.
So do you all wanna have him to work on that, we're gonna have to have a special call meeting, probably next week anyway, try to get some numbers together, and then maybe have a vote?
Yeah. Things you can get the numbers?
Yeah, I don't know, I can't get it by then, 'cause I'm gonna have to run it in a couple of weeks, and I can't, I can't get it by then. But I mean, I got it by the February meeting.
Do you all wanna wait then to do the vote on it, to receive the numbers, or do you wanna go ahead and vote to do this and let him?
Yeah, I think we just wait until the February meeting, I think it'd be best to wait until the February meeting, and let Tyler have the chance to get the bids together, and that way we know what we're dealing with, and I hate to, you know, run the risk maybe of the three-inch pipe being gone, and us having to pay more to get it, so then the cost on that goes up, but...
Okay, we'll just have Tyler, we'll start checking on that, and then we'll try to do our February meeting, be, be able to take a vote to get that going, if that's what you decide to do. Just another thing, I just wanna bring up, I had a call, and I think other council members had a call concerning the, the lot that we have over here with Jamestown Court was, the empty lot, just expressed, expressing his thought of, he would like to see that turned into part of the cemetery, and maybe something done with that, and maybe it's something we just wanna discuss or talk about, maybe what our plans might be for that lot, or is that something we wanna consider? Now, the road making it part of the cemetery would not be in a lot of places like there at the cemetery, just something that we need to, I think, start thinking about what we're gonna do with that lot.
I think it needs to be a cemetery.
I'm sorry, Barry?
I'm sorry, I'm on the floor, I agree with him, I've thought that for a long time, that we should use this, join the cemetery. I don't know what route we have to take, but that would be my opinion, too.
Can I ask a question, is that the lot that I talked about on one twenty-seven?
Mm-hmm, right, that, where the Jamestown Court motel was.
Yeah. Is someone considering a festival that's prime real estate entering the city or staging events?
Well, we use cemetery money to buy it, and I was under the impression that, well, in my mind, anyway, I thought that's what we were doing, was basically buying it so we would have that to expand the cemetery, 'cause we've got no other...
No other place?
No other direction to expand the cemetery. But it won't be, I mean, there won't be anything there, hopefully, immediately, but...
I think the path will always be there, huh?
Well, yeah, that'd be probably so, yeah.
So it's something we may wanna think about, you know? But anyway, I did have a call about that, and I think a few other members had a call, so I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, to see what everybody's thoughts were on that. Another thing, we had actually planned tonight to, I think, try to have a nomination to fill the vacant council seat, but I think we're actually going to have a special call meeting to do that, just for the fact of we have a couple of council members that are out, where's Barry's on the phone, Terry Robertson's not allowed to be here. I feel like it's a very important thing, you know, it's a big decision, and everybody should have a part in that. All the council members should be able to have a part discussing that, and if they have someone they wanna nominate, everybody should be available to do that, so...
You have a date in mind for a special call meeting?
Well, we'll, we'll need to do it next week, because whoever, we've got to get someone appointed, 'cause we only have thirty days.
By the end of the month, I guess.
We need to make sure that we have the person appointed, that they accept it, and then we get them sworn in before the first, because that will be after thirty days, and it's not our decision, so...
What's the date, Tony?
The date's the twentieth, so we need to think about next week.
How long's Barry in quarantine?
How, yeah, when will you be out, Barry?
Uh, first of the week.
Okay, and then Terry, I guess, will be okay to be back, I think, the first of next week. Twenty-fourth is on Monday, I don't know.
The twenty-fifth, I have an appointment in my...
And what about Monday, the twenty-fourth? Does that work for everybody?
Works for me, it's worked on you, Barry?
Yeah.
And can we do five o'clock, does that work for everybody?
Clear?
Yes?
I mean, you all do what you need to do, on speaking on behalf of the meeting, because I know they're saying that the school board meeting's at five-thirty, and this would be hard to cover everything.
Okay.
How long's their meeting usually to last?
How long's what? It's like, oh, wait, really? Yeah, how long would it be?
How long, February Tuesday?
I think, I think they actually, I'm sorry, five, they actually...
They meet at five?
Yes.
How about Tuesday?
I can't be here Tuesday, I've got an appointment, lots of things, I'm about to...
I'm good any day.
I mean, you all do everyone, it's not a huge issue, but just throwing that out there.
Well, we don't, you know, we're lucky, we oughta be here.
Twenty-seventh, Thursday?
Because we can actually probably do all of it that night, could we not, maybe, or if we...
Sure.
I mean, if, if whoever is nominated is aware, and I, I'm assuming that whoever somebody wants to nominate, they've probably talked to them and know that they are interested in doing it, and then maybe we could, you know, do it all that night?
Or just do it Monday night, and that way you have time if that person is not here, that person has...
Does that person have to be sworn in, though, by the first?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we do it Monday night, then we have a lot of weeks there to get the person in, and get it sworn in, and all that.
That's true, yeah.
And I hate to do conflicts with the school board.
I don't have, I don't have any time on Monday, anybody coming at four-thirty? Four-thirty? Mitchell, can you do four-thirty on Monday?
Yeah.
How many, William, four-thirty?
Yeah, it's about any time.
Percent's probably don't help you all, and if you gotta be there at five, but...
Well, I mean, I said, it's up to you, it's not really on us, whatever works for you, or it's your city.
Well, we just try to make it to where anybody that wants to be here can be here.
Well, I don't get off until five, but I'll make it happen, if you wanna do four-thirty, I'll make it happen.
Well, let's do five, they're not gonna have time to be here at four-thirty, either at five, anyway, so, and then maybe if whoever we have that is the new person to fill the seat, maybe y'all could be here for that.
I mean, two and a half?
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
What's that?
Just say the B team.
We've got a lot of reinforcements over here.
I guess, Eddie Hollis would cover that, but I've got a lot of calls and messages about water at Ramsey Creek. That's an issue we're gonna have to talk about sometime, I don't know if it's feasible, possible, but it's something we're gonna have to talk about, because they don't have any water.
I think Ramsey Creek is one of our roads.
It's, it's not on the, it's not on the eleven roads, but it is on a project, I've got, it's, it's the Krill's Row project, and it is actually on there, it, I don't have that profile in front of me, that's, that's another one that we looked at it running all the way through, to be beneficial, the city really needs to be run all the way through, that's not feasible, I mean, you're talking, several years ago, that was a, that was over a million dollar project just in itself, to run it all the way through there. And that was before prices went crazy. Right now, and, and these are probably low, because when I had this profile done, it was, I actually put in, it's, it's called the Krill's Row, Krill's Row area on, on KIA portal, and it was done to get me a feed, another feed, there's a, there's about a mile section of line, probably not even that, from Jay Reader Road back to About Man Road, and there never was a line put in there, and it's, it then ends at both places. If I can get a tie-in, and that's what this project does, if I can get that tie-in between those two places, not only does it give me the loop down to that area, but it gives me another feed so I can put more water across the river, that's where we're having our problems now, we, we don't have, we don't have the volume across the river, actually, to do many more taps down on, in, you know, Manntown Swamp Pond area. That, that Ramsey Creek project, I'm thinking is about a six-hundred-plus thousand dollar project. That's coming off next to the Milder's House, and doing a tie-in, because you've got, I know a two creek crossings down through there, and then in, and basically, right before you go up the hill to, to come out, you know, back toward ten fifty-eighth. But it is, it, I can't remember, I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up, it's a, it's a million-something dollar project in, in those two things itself. But I do, I do have a, a profile and the engineers have it spec.
Isn't the county, couldn't the county also have toward that, you know, it never happened?
Yep. I can look that up if you want the numbers on it, but that, it's over a million dollars.
I know there's, uh, there's several, we've got a lot, there's several times we've been through there, and I know there's a couple houses being built. They even know there's no water in there. I don't know what's touched that to begin.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's one of those lines that, you know, it's gonna put another dead in line in the system. Uh, but, you know, that's, I guess we're here to put water out to the citizens.
Uh, well, yeah, I'm in, uh, Derek coffee now. I think we saw a line about probably a mile out, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had, we've had several do that, that very thing. When we take them over, um, people that wanted water and it just wasn't feasible for the city to do it, um, I, since I've been doing this, we've had several that they, they lay the line. Um, we go through, we go through the engineers. It's inspected and, um, they have an inspector on site while, while these people are putting the line in. They, uh, it's drawn up, submitted division of water, just like anything else is. Once it's approved, they have an inspector to watch them put it in, and then we take the line over after it's put in. Uh, that way they can, a lot of people do it just so they don't have those, you know, mile service lines running out through there. I, my, my brother's got one of the exact same thing. He didn't wanna pay to put the line in. I think he ran fifteen hundred foot, one inch down about on the road. So there's a lot of them out there that, that do that very thing. I was trying to find it, yeah.
It'll be very expensive.
Air number one, in my opinion, with the ARPA money, clean water money, all that, air number one project is a new tank. That's, I mean, not looking at anything else. Um, you know, you, w- we would supply hundreds versus, you know, a handle when you're looking at a, a new water tank. We've got the Clifton Creek tank and the, um, Maynard tank, both. They're doing what they're supposed to do, but they've out, they've basically outlived their life, especially the glass tank. They're gonna have to have some repairs, and when we were talking, we're, you know, with, there's more people moving to, you know, to that end, the river, all that, we're gonna have to do something coming up and, and a new water tank. We looked at getting rid of Maynard and Clifton and doing a three-hundred thousand gallon elevated tank and, and servicing both areas with that. That, to me, is our number one project in, in our sys, our systems need, I guess, you know, that's the best way to put it. It's a, I mean, it's over a million dollars too. I mean, it was a.
For the water tank?
Yeah, it's a, and that, and this is numbers, the pre-COVID numbers. I mean, we've had these, these projects already profiled, you know, so, what's profiled at KIA right now, it's a, it's just a little over one point one million for, for the tank.
The three-hundred thousand gallon tank to replace the other two.
Yep.
And that's basically us, we done, that's.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna come to where we, we have to do it. Let's see, I found the Krillborough project.
I know we can use ARPA money towards that, but is there anything else available out there that we can look at?
We've, we've got, there's, there's some clean water money out there too. I mean, but I don't, you know, that's divvied up through the state. The county got some, uh, they were looking, they were, they were already talking to us about getting some things done with that money. I guess, it looks like there could be infrastructure money coming, you know, down the road. It should be, but, you know, that's, it's still a.
We don't know how much.
Yeah.
Don't know how much or when we'll get it.
Yeah, the old, and this, this one's older than the other one. It's approved, the Krillborough project's approved, and it's right at a million dollar project. And that's getting both the, the tie-in, which is the actual, what, what really, the beneficial part of the project would be the tie-in that gives me another feed into the, into the bottoms and across the river. But since it was down in that area, that was tied. Ramsey Creek, they had talked about it and it was tied to that. But when I talked, like, before we looked at this tie-in, we looking at a tie-in going from ten fifty-eight all the way through and it just wasn't, I mean, it's, it was one point something million before then. And they didn't really, that was just a guess because nobody would give you a, a digging answer when they started with that fluff, you know, and coming in Ramsey, uh, you know, the bottoms that I had Ramsey Creek, they.
Coming downhill.
Yeah, nobody wanted to even look at that. So coming in from the other way, it's still, I'm wanting to say it's five, six hundred thousand what it was then. And, you know, it is to put another dead in line in the system, but it does, this project does have the, the tie-ins to give me the loop, which would be extremely beneficial for our system. I would love to see that tie-in and the elevated tank from the lower end. And I've got a couple more, you know, that, that are profiled on here too, um, you know, tie-ins like on Mount Pleasant over there. It's, it's quarter mile, but it just stops them because it's, it's just, it would have to be directional drill. And it's big money, so they stopped it on both sides.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Jeff, do you have anything that you need to?
No way, I'm having some of that.
Okay, all right. Nobody has anything else? I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion made.
I second.
Second.
All in favor? All of us can stay.
Yeah, there you go.
Come back on here.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.